All right, let's call the work session order. First item on the agenda for the work session is the trash and debris ordinance. Mr. Lashley.
Well, what you have in front of you is the one that was the draft ordinance that was discussed at the two previous public hearings. At the last, the second of the two public hearings, several board comments were made that this language needed to be tweaked. We didn't actually go into the details.
Of what tweaking?
Of what tweaking. So I think the purpose of this work session is to allow the board to tweak.
I think that was to clean it up some.
Oh.
That's a better, better way to say it.
Clean up the trash ordinance.
One of the thoughts that I had in looking at this, it's been about a week and a half ago now, I suppose, but so I'm gonna have to call up the chapter fifty of our code of ordinances. No, 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 this is earlier section. We have some, under the solid waste ordinance, which is chapter fifty, we have definitions, one of which is household garbage. It says it's animal, vegetable, mineral waste resulting from the handling, preparation of food, consumption of food, da-da-da-da, basically defining normal operation of a household. It seems to me that if you ask the question, do we want to include that stuff in this ordinance, I'd say yes. So it's possible that one of the things that we can consider doing is falling back to a definition that already exists and refer to it. Then it gets tougher. There's another one called rubbish. I think rubbish, I think of something else when I think of rubbish, but this says anything that's not household garbage to, shall include but not be limited to large metal objects such as old stoves, refrigerators, auto parts, brush, building demolition, or other non-petrusible solid waste. Means it won't biodegrade. That one won't work, I don't think, for this, but it seems to me that it leads us in a direction where we could be tightening our language by saying, using these definitions, use the household garbage one as it stands, and then possibly include solid waste, household related solid waste, and to include appliances that don't work and things like that. Very narrow. Not get into people that are collecting old tractors and farm equipment, not get into the people that are collecting old trucks, or lawnmowers, or that kind of stuff. I don't think we can go there. As long as we stay with stuff that is garbage, or household stuff, as opposed to commercial, or farm, or other operations. Seems to me that's, I don't know that this is a solution necessarily, but it's a direction I think we should be headed.
Well, I like, I like your idea there. I think, I think it moves us in the right direction, and the thought occurs that what we're really talking about is stuff that is not supposed to be left outside.
Should not be.
You know, a tractor is supposed to be left outside, even a lawn tractor. A sofa is not supposed to be left outside.
Correct.
A refrigerator is not supposed to be left outside. So these are all things which, number one, don't serve any purpose outside, and number two, are going to simply get more and more degraded the longer they sit out there.
What about twenty-nine rusted lawnmowers?
Well, I think that becomes a junk definition into the, back to the zoning ordinance, and maybe someday we find a way of addressing it here, but I, I think the, where I hear, the ones I hear about are more in the line of what we're talking about tonight, which is this household stuff.
Well, we already have the definition of over two hundred square feet.
Right. The only problem is it's a zoning penalty, not a, or, or, there was a misdemeanor.
Yeah, well, it is. The problem with zoning, and that's what sort of prompted this whole discussion originally, the problem with zoning is, we have to file a zoning case, it takes forever and a day to get into court, and, and in fact, the way it actually works, Josh issues a violation, and they have an appeal to the BZA, and then after that, if the BZA rules against us or them, then there's an appeal to the circuit court, and so it's, it can be a twelve to sixteen month process.
What sent me off in this direction was the, the last few words of bullet A there, which endanger the health of any person, or injuriously affect public health and safety. And, and when I think of that, I think of free on and old refrigerators, and garbage rotting, and household stuff. I don't think of old tractors and...
Well, and, and, and twenty-nine lawnmowers, they are, they may be unsightly, but they are not, they're not likely to be a health hazard. Obviously, at some point, if you have four thousand lawnmowers, and they're all leaking a drop of oil a day, that's the point that might become, but, you know, they're, they're not, and, and there are legitimate reasons, whether we like it or not, why someone may wanna have twenty-nine lawnmowers. Whereas it's, there is no legitimate reason for opening up your front door and throwing garbage, bags of garbage out in the lawn.
Or leaving a sofa out there.
Yeah, or, yes, just piling...
Hoping somebody will take it away, and they have it for three months.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I like the way you're moving there, Jim, I, I don't, I, I definitely don't like the "and other substances" wording, 'cause that really hits into the rest of the universe, so I definitely have a problem with that.
The, the two things, you're talking household, uh...
Household garbage, which is... Already defined. Already defined, and household-related... Appliances and stuff.
How about, how about parts of rotting households?
Well, yeah.
Which, we all know where that trailer sits.
Yeah. Well, there, there, there actually is something in here that, that talks about that, but I think it's construction debris, or something like that.
About language like interior furniture appliances.
Furnishings, maybe, something like that, yeah. I mean, I...
Household-related furnishings.
Furnishings and appliances.
And appliances.
I, I would rather not, as Mark pointed, I would rather not end up with saying "and any other thing that we can think of." Let's make the list, have it be narrow.
If we name three or four "ands," okay, but let's not have the, no open "and."
The catch-all, yeah, I agree. That's, I think that was one of the concerns that we heard, and, and I get...
We can always come back and add something if...
Right, or do we have a separate ordinance to cover, or a separate section of the ordinance to cover other things?
Twenty-nine artistically-related lawnmowers.
Right. As we move on, it would be nice, just like we've been trying to do with some other things, is start off with something that's done correctly, and move forward with that.
And I frankly would be more comfortable having it too narrow than too broad, is our first little foray into this.
So would you, would you be, my assumption is we would eliminate C under the first section?
Correct, 'cause it, it, I would have up early in the, in the five-ten unlawful conditions of trash garbage, I would let that say, you know, something like household garbage as defined in article...
Don't even need to have that as defined, it's in the same article.
Or as defined, whatever.
We used the word household garbage, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Use the word household garbage.
B, that paragraph is a little, I, I don't know, I think it's a little confusing and a little wordy. I think what you're saying is that people need to put their garbage in, in trash cans or something.
Yeah, I think this is actually just out of state code, but yeah.
Well, I, I can believe that, because it's overly wordy and hard to understand. I mean, couldn't we, couldn't we just tighten that up a little bit and say, you need to keep your, you know, you need to keep your garbage in containers that are made for that?
Sure. And/or taken into the green boxes and landfill.
Well, until, well, you put them in that until you, yeah.
Right.
I would hope they will eventually...
Well, there are those that won't.
Hope nobody gets like a huge, you know, thing there, just...
So you get rid of C altogether.
One, one situation we're dealing with, there's a fairly large truck parked in a yard, and the garbage is put on that truck until it starts, well, after it starts falling off enough, they drive it to the landfill. And this is, this is a big truck.
Yes.
Not a wheelbarrow. The neighbors are unhappy about that, as you might imagine.
So...
Have them in an appropriate container.
Yeah, that's one we probably wouldn't be able to deal with.
So, so we're looking at paragraph A, basically the words under trash, garbage, refuse, litter, substances, we pick up, we still want the visible from the road?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, all right, that's fine. So we talk house, household garbage, and household-related furnishings and appliances, to, to go into those, those words there, and delete the trash, garbage, refuse, litter, and other substances.
Can I, the house, the interior, the furnishings and appliances, do you wanna try and encompass anything could be in a house, somebody rips out their shower stall, and they leave the shower laying, shower stall laying in the front yard, I mean, I don't think that's the kind of stuff we want, so, I mean, things that, like remodeling projects, people will sometimes leave the, the old toilet and the old shower.
Yeah, you could say fixtures, furnishings, and appliances.
So I was gonna use some sort of play off the word, interior of the home.
Furnishing, appliances, and that's where I said we're getting the "ands," so...
Yeah, the "ands," the "ands" are okay, just not the catch-all.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's probably a good...
Okay.
I guess my, my view of it is, if it should be, or used to be, inside of a house, then we want it covered by this. That's sort of the generic.
But without, without any, any open-ended other substances kind of thing.
I got what we want.
All right, so then, then in, in paragraph B, where we, where we talk about the material, which we're going to redefine in A, in, well, we care whether it's personally owned, privately owned, or we just say receptacles?
I was gonna say trash receptacles designed for that purpose.
Okay, that's fine.
Keep it simple.
So we don't care if it's personally or privately owned? Anything else we need to change there?
I have a philosophical question. When I, when I drafted this up, I gave you sort of the gamut of everything you can do. There's one thing in here that we hadn't talked about, but you kinda have to decide, 'cause if you don't want, if you don't think you're gonna do it, there's no point in having it in here. If you look at subsection in fifty-dash-eleven enforcement, it actually allows the county to go clean it up and then lean their property, but if we don't think we're actually ever gonna go do that, yeah, and that may be an answer for the county administrator to answer, or a question for the county administrator, because, one, budget, and two, manpower and energy, so...
Kurt's shaking his head, yes.
So I, I, I put this in to show you the, all of the available things, but if we don't think we actually want, 'cause here's what's gonna happen, if you have this in here, then the citizens are gonna scream when we don't come do it.
Right.
So I, I did wanna bring this to your attention, only if we think we want to be able to go clean it up ourselves.
So it's the line that if the condition's not corrected within ten days, it's that sentence?
It's really all of that subsection A, because if you look at the other penalty violations, or most of that subsection A, because there's a fifty dollar a day charge that we can do.
So just cut it off at the end of, of the sentence, it's to correct the condition?
Right. Basically, we take away all of the language that allows us to go correct it and lean their property.
Let me make a suggestion, I, I think keeping that language in the ordinance allows for flexibility, and, and I don't think as a, as a matter, as a practical matter, begin down that road without you all being aware of it, and, and the rationale and things like that. And I don't know what situation would arise to that. We've had some abandoned buildings, some houses that were burned out, that we had to go through that process of doing it, so having it as, as something that's a remedy for egregious violations may be good, but it certainly, I, I know I wouldn't begin that process without you all being aware and, and the rationale for going down that road.
Let me go back to the penalties, and we say violation is subject to a civil penalty of fifty dollars for the first violation. Okay, so we bill him fifty dollars, he may or may not pay it, but then doesn't necessarily clean anything up, 'cause it costs more to clean it up than pay the fifty dollars.
It's fifty dollars a day.
Yeah, it's per day.
It's per day, so if I...
Did I see that, where is it, the per day?
Each, it's halfway down in subsection A, it says each business day during which the same violation is found to have existed.
Okay, all right, so that's in subsection A, all right, okay. So we're just...
I mean, I don't know how this works, the judges have never assessed this penalty upfront. The judges always give them, "Hammer, continue this thirty days, clean it up," and if they do, I, I've never seen a judge give the penalty if the people clean the property up.
Yeah, what, and, the, the other thing, I guess, back to where we take an affirmative action to clean it up, if we're confronted with a situation that meets all the tests of debris that needs to be cleaned up, and the property is owned by an estate, or we can't determine really who owns it, or there's multiple folks that own it, those situations do exist as far as ownership patterns, people may go dump on their property, I mean, that's, that's one of the challenges that we have, too. That's a last, absolute last resort.
Well, the way it's normally done is you hire a contractor to come do it, the problem is then we have to front the money, and it becomes leaning on the property when the estate sells, or sells the property.
Or it's getting liquid taxes, which usually goes down that road, too, so...
Can we, oh... I'm, I'm sorry, am I missing something? I'm looking for the fifty dollars a day. What am I missing it?
If you're on the sec, on fifty-dash-twelve, under penalties, subsection A, you'll see the word, you see where two hundred dollars is right in the middle of that paragraph?
Yeah.
Look at the word after two hundred dollars.
Each business day. Oh, each, okay, so the separate, so the days, okay, all right, gotcha.
So the way this works is if they don't clean it up, they get a notice of violation, and then I'm gonna get a court date, it's probably gonna be thirty days out, and so the day we show up to court, they've probably got thirty days worth of fines.
Okay.
And, you know, so you really, you're looking at fifteen hundred dollar fine, again, the judge will never give that, the judge is gonna give them time to clean it up, but...
One thing that I think is extremely important, and, and I'm open to what's the best way to ensure this, is that at the beginning of this process, at the front of this process, that the, the, either the entire board, or the board member whose violation is in their district, is, is aware of this from, from the beginning.
That'll get through as well.
Yeah, I agree, absolutely.
I was gonna say, and, we do need that assurance, but in most cases, we're gonna be aware of it.
Now, the entire, from the beginning, does that mean before the certified violation notice goes out, or at the same time that the violation?
I think the same time that the violation notice goes out.
Well, what is, what is the beginning of the process?
Well, if you look at fifty-dash-eleven enforcement, A, when the county official or the designee of the county attorney, or county administrator determines...
County attorney, that wasn't...
County administrator. Determines that any such unlawful condition exists, he shall notify the property owner of record of such determination by certified mail return receipt requested, and then they gives them ten days to correct. So that's the question, does the, are you saying the board should know before the notice goes out, or you just get copied on the notice?
I think copy on the notice.
Well, I, I think as a practice, we...
I, I think, I think, I think the board member should know beforehand, I think the board member needs to know before it goes out. I, 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 I think that, you know, there are, there are areas, we have to be careful in this stuff, and I'm, I'm well aware that we need to be careful about that, because staff has statutory responsibilities, but, but, you know, in a way, I think each one of us is the expert in his district, and we're the ones who are most aware of what's going on, and maybe there's extenuating circumstances, maybe something is happening that, that, one of the things I hate is coming down on citizens like a ton of bricks, when we don't need to do that.
Maybe we should be notified when the complaint is filed.
And, and, well, yeah, just excellent, excellent idea, since this is a complaint-driven ordinance, yeah, we should, I think that's a good idea, because, yeah, I mean, you got some of these cases that are, everybody knows about them, they've been there forever, and they're, they're not gonna go away until somebody makes it.
Somebody...
Once this ordinance is in place, you're gonna have neighbors...
Attempting to...
Calling, you know, my, my neighbor's got garbage in his front yard.
And you happen to know these guys have been feuding for the last six years.
Well, I mean, maybe I know that, that, that an elderly lady lives alone here, and she, and she broke her ankle last week, and she's only got one relative in the area, and that's why there's a couple bags of garbage.
Which brings me to the ten days.
Sitting on the carport.
I'm, I'm not sure that, given that, that we keep the ability to clean it up ourselves through county action, that ten days is, is the right number in that situation. I mean, on the one hand, you would expect some kind of a response within ten days that says, "I'm an old lady, and I broke my leg, give me an extra week till my grandson comes and he can do it," as opposed to complete silence, so you wanna prompt a response. I'm not sure that having, having it completed within ten days is...
Notice the language says after the ten days, the county administrator is designee, may order such condition, so it gives the county administrator discretion, doesn't say shall, it says may, and again, in the real world, nobody does it on the eleventh day. In the real world, if they call, you don't wanna clean it up, you don't wanna go to court, you don't wanna deal with it, you'll work with them as long as they're trying to work with you, so that's why the word "may" is in there.
Or could we say, could, could we introduce the idea of after ten days, if, if there isn't a good faith response of some kind?
It's not, how about it's not substantially corrected or something?
Or somehow, other than just a, I mean, I, I don't wanna completely...
But I could easily see the situation just, my grandson will be here, he's coming home after, after, during the holidays, and he'll pick it up.
Jim and I have dealt with a couple of people that have that very, very situation that they don't mean, they're not intentionally having this occur, and they do have to get assistance to get stuff cleaned up.
And, and, and of course, we also, we also know of other situations where, where there are groups that do help people under those circumstances, and we can intervene in that way.
So stick the word substantially in front of corrected.
Yeah, I think would be a very good start to...
If, if I could maybe lay out a, a process statement in county attorney area to convert that into some language, if I receive a call or my designee complaint, then I think reasonable practice holds that I make the board member whose district's aware that the complaint's been filed. Then we would investigate to see if the claim is substantial, is, is grounded in, in, in a violation, and let's presume it is, then notice would be done, certainly with the board members, that one, investigation reveals there is a violation, two, notice is going to be sent out on this date, so we're clearly communicating, with emails and all that, I think that's, that's a reasonable effort.
So let's go through that again. First of all, the complaint comes in, and the appropriate supervisor is advised that the complaint...
That we received a complaint, and we're investigating.
Now, you're in the process of investigating and doing the process.
And that we'll then communicate back that the investigation has revealed this, and at some point, I guess, I'm authorized to make a determination whether such a violation is a violation, and my experience is, most of these are pretty self-evident, I mean, a couple bags of garbage, a lot of housing debris or, or something, and, and part of this is just getting ourselves through the neighbor versus neighbor, because that'll come up, and I think reasonable people will be able to, to ferret out those instances. We get, we've investigated, we've determined that a violation has occurred, then I would advise board, certainly county attorney's gonna be involved with all of this as well, that a notice is to be issued on this date, and the board member is copied.
Can I stop you right there? All of those steps would not be in the ordinance, that would be internal policy.
That would be, yeah, process, and that's what I'm, I'm trying, yeah, I, I agree with you, it's not in the ordinance. We would go out, issue the notice, I think Mr. White's point, I think, was that, is if, that within, after, after sending out the notice, that a good faith effort or a remediation plan, I don't wanna be too legal easy...
I guess some suggested language I could ask for.
A, a substantial corrective action plan, or, or something like that, that they've been able to submit for approval, which gets in the time, how much time, effort, that type of thing, and then the second tripwire is if they don't do it by the date that they said they would do it, then we start this more, more policing kind of process.
Here's the language I'd...
Can we see, could we see a written policy statement as to how this process would work? It, it's not a part of the ordinance, but it would be a policy...
How I administer it, you know, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would, and, would it be reflected in any permanent policy document, such that four years from now, when this thing comes up and said, well, what did we?
And I'm not here in four years?
I know, I'm just saying.
Well, it's a written internal policy, it's gonna be written...
I'm just, I'm being facetious.
Okay, as long as they're written in...
I'm thinking lottery ticket now.
Do we have, is there, is there a, a policy document that this can fit into?
I, I think, yes, we can have a written document.
Because a lot of policies get established, but they're established, and everybody likes the writing, but it's not in some permanent fixture such that people can refer back to it four or five years later.
Well, do we have a, a, I mean, where do we, we have all kinds of policies, where are the, where are the receptive...
I'm trying to think, and let me think through the animal, vegetable, mineral part of this, I, I'll find a home for it that'll memorialize it, I think that's what the board wants to do.
It's just something, if somebody, a, a document that would routinely get referred to, some new, new individual comes in and is, gets faced with this, and he can look and say, "Yeah, well, that's what, that's how we do this." That's...
I think between the county...
Yeah, I think an official, an official policy, county administrator policy document, which you'll keep in your file cabinet, and, you know...
Yeah, I, I just...
Let Allison know where it is, so if you're out sick, we can find it.
Well, Allison's keeping it.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I, I've just seen too many, I've seen it in homeowners associations, I've seen it in...
Oh, I know, absolutely.
They just, we got the policy, and everybody agrees to it, but it, unless it's permanently in Scots somewhere.
And, and nothing is really permanent, all right?
Tom, Tom, you hit some, you hit some language you wanted just to hear.
I was just gonna see what y'all thought about this, in, in fifty-eleven, if the condition is not substantially corrected within ten days, and the county administrator determines in a sole discretion that no good faith efforts are being made to resolve the matter, then...
Yeah, that's, that's the key, I think.
That's good.
Yeah, I like that.
Good.
So it'd be really great if, if, so at this point, you're gonna work on that aspect of it, and Brian's gonna adopt a policy, and...
Well, I'll come back with a draft policy that I will prepare to implement.
Given these changes, we need to run another public hearing? Okay?
No, 'cause they're actually making it less...
That's, okay, that's fine, that's what I figured.
And so we'll bring these back to you all for, you wanna work session item, or you want it under regular agenda, mainly?
I think we oughta be able to do it, deal with it in agenda, if we've got problems with an agenda, we can, we can bounce it back again, but I think we oughta do it in, in the irregular meetings, so we can adopt it.
I don't think it's gonna take, I don't think it's gonna take this long, yeah.
No, I'll, I'll get all of y'all draft language in the next couple of days.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll do this under old business.
Okay. I would be hopeful, I, I will make it just as a, as a comment, that if, you know, Amber's here, if there's some reporting on this to let people know that, the direction we're headed now, I think that would be, would be an excellent thing, if it fits somewhere in your, in your plans for reporting. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think you would need to wait for us to do, take formal action, because...
Okay. Now, one, one last thing I would ask is, rather than just the district supervisor, all of us should be notified, because...
Could be somebody you know.
It could be somebody we know, or, or somebody that goes, "You need to call him," because he's a buddy of mine, and he'll...
That's a really good point.
That's fine, though.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah.
Or it could be on Keels property, so, yeah.
Well, especially early on, this is, this is a new, this is a new ordinance, and so early on, I think it would be smart to...
Okay.
Yeah, I think it would definitely address the ones that we all are...
In fact, this is the only ordinance, I think, whenever it's adopted, that I actually administer.
We can find you some more, we're looking for one.
It was you or your designee, so...
That was not a statement.
Okay. We finished with this?
With the bomb.
Waiver the trash decal, I get to wave trash, that's, that's my other authority.
Okay, Josh, you got it now.
Talking about the designee, I think you know who that's gonna be.
Nope, I haven't made that choice just yet.
He was here.
Still voting for him.
Yeah, he's still here.
The designee, please stand up and come to the podium.
Stand! And who's in my favor that day?
It'll be the other one, right?
That's it.
Okay, go ahead, Josh.
If you generally recall, we brought some issues to your attention several months ago relating to home occupations at the time, home occupations being basically really minor businesses that are conducted out of people's, people's homes. We were starting to get requests for some unusual types of home-based businesses, and due to the really restricted nature of our current definition at that time, we just couldn't find a way to permit them within the confines of the ordinance. So, long story short, we brought that to the board's attention, the board initiated planning commission action, and then they held the planning hearing, the, their public hearing on it, and so I think before you, you should have their resolution of recommendation of approval of the ordinance. And what staff did... Uh, and what staff did, currently, all we have is a definition for home occupation. It has a few performance standards built into it, uh, it's not a very good way of writing a definition, quite frankly. So we took those out, we simplified the definitions, we put them in a new section of the ordinance. So, uh, everything's more logically laid out, um, you have your intent and purpose and procedural guidelines and all that, all that stuff. So that should be what you have before you. I'm sorry, I'm just pulling this up.
Josh, currently, these are, uh, allowed, uh, by right in certain zones?
Ag and all of the residential zones, so all one through four, you can have home occupation as an accessory used to a dwelling, I guess.
So they're by right, they're, they're as it currently stands, is there, if someone wanted to, um, you know, if someone has a, has a, a, uh, is an accountant and they, and they're, they're going to, uh, use one room in their house, do they, do they come to you and ask you for permission to do that, or do they just do it?
If I had to guess, usually, most of the time, they just do it.
But what would be the point of them coming and talking to you?
Usually they require some external approval. Lately, probably within the last couple of months, we get a lot of firearm transfer agents, ob- obviously, they require state and federal approval. Those approvals require local consistency with ordinances, so it really requires them to come to us first. We give them the home occupation permit and they go on from there.
What if I'm selling widgets and trinkets on eBay out of my house and, and do I, do I, do I come to you and ask you for a zoning permit or something for that?
See, there's, there's discretion built into that, 'cause it depends on the intensity. And there's a lot of gray area in this, which makes it really hard to define these concepts. If you're not having, basically, usually what we look at is, do you have customer contact at, at your residence? If the answer's no, unless you specifically need a home occupation from the county, a home occupation permit, we don't typically grant you one. We just say it's not needed.
So if somebody's just selling stuff on eBay, goes to the local, uh, uh, lot, yard sales and picks up stuff and then sells it on eBay, uh, there was no need for him to come to you. He could come to you and get a, a home oc- uh, a, a permit.
Sure, like for insurance purposes, if he needed for that, he would come and.
If, yeah, if he needed for insurance purpose, but if he didn't need it for that, I mean, he, he could do it, or he could come to you and get a permit, it, it's just his call. And since nobody else would really particularly be the wiser, what, uh, if there's no customer contact or semi is picking up, dropping stuff off at the front door?
UPS maybe. Yeah, I guess, well, I, I don't know, were you, did you have more preamble that you wanted to go through?
No, the, really, the intent here was not to, to change home occupations at all. We expanded on some concepts there, but we've not made them.
What we could, couldn't we do before?
You had to be able to look at your house and you could not tell that anybody was running a business out of it. So that comes kind of a problem, um, I brought up the lady that wanted to do horse therapy out in the fields around her house, which would be normally be a perfectly fine home occupation, but because it didn't let you use outside your house, we couldn't permit it. So this kind of expands on the concept, it's more of a more intensive home occupation, if you will.
What, where do we put things like daycare centers, where, where a, a stay-at-home mom has two, three additional, and she has a playground in the backyard?
Daycares, if they're up to twelve, we have to treat them as single-family dwellings.
Okay, eleven.
So we give them home occupations, which we do have, um, quite a few of those, a few in Lake of the Woods, actually.
And under those circumstances, they would need a license from the state.
Correct, and then they honestly, it's local compliance, so.
So the state would insist that, uh, they've got a permit?
Correct.
Alright.
I guess what seems, it seems to me we're taking a very simple uh, language currently, and we're making it very confusing and adding in a lot of stuff that to me doesn't make a lot of sense, because of, a- again, we get back to enforcement. I mean, do we really wanna say that they can only use thirty percent of their house? Uh, how are we gonna enforce that? And, and, and what difference does it make if they got one or two or ten businesses? If, if the impact is such so that, because we, I mean, we li- we live and we, you know, we just spent a lot of time this past weekend talking about the future and about digital, and that's where the future is, and it's not at all a reasonable thing, somebody could be running
Two businesses.
Multiple businesses out of their home in this digital age, so, y- you know, uh.
With a consultant with fifteen clients, a, a multiple business?
And it's not why, I mean, and how could somebody run, I don't even know how you could run multiple, it'd be difficult to run, I, I guess if you had nine family members living there, you could, you could run nine different businesses, but that's not typically the situations that we deal with. These are basically usually somebody running a, a garage or, or, um, daycare like you were talking about or something of that nature.
Or a baker. I guess McDonald's Bakers.
Yes. Um, I, I, just to introduce this note of interest, there are, there are restaurants in, in Cuba that are called, uh, and I may not pronounce this correctly, I believe it would be pronounced Paladar. Uh, and they're basically, people have restaurants in their, in their home. And, uh, they were, they've always been in Cuba for, you know, for years and years, but they were illegal until the nineteen nineties. This is, I'm, this is according to Wikipedia now, I'm, that I'm reading from here. Um, but they were, they were illegal until the nineties, but the fall of the USSR and consequent economic crisis in Cuba forced the government to make the economic reforms in nineteen ninety-three. So when the government got in trouble and things weren't going as well, they gave the people some more freedom. And then, uh, in, uh, twenty-ten, they reviewed those measures and resulted in substantial increase in the number of these things and the diversification of their proposals. So, so again, m- more freedom in, in Cuba, more freedom is better, it allows more economic growth. So I think we need to keep that in mind when we're, when, when we're looking at this, because I, I just, I don't like the, I don't like the wordiness of this and the, um, uh, all of the restrictions and, and, and quite frankly, I mean, in, in some cases, I think they go a little bit overboard. I mean, I'm not sure that, uh, uh, seven employees, I mean, that doesn't really fit my idea of, of, of a home occupation.
No, no.
That was something else as a sticky point of staff, we originally proposed no change to home occupation, which is two currently, and then you'd be allowed three for home enterprises.
What, what led to seven?
The planning commission thought four and eight were appropriate, against staff's better judgment. I can't tell you otherwise.
Because you're not, and, and you say no more than eight, uh, vehicle trips, okay, uh, seven of them for.
That's carpool.
I think they, there was actually refresh my memory, Josh, but I think there was actually a, an effort to try to expand what people were allowed to do, and they actually ended up really restricted and, believe it or not, is what they were doing by attempting to expand it. And I think they were thinking of a, a number of different businesses that people operate, operate out of their homes, but not typically in subdivisions. And that, that, I think that's where the whole thing is, is this is geared more for a subdivision than it would be for your agricultural and.
Well, that's my concern, if somebody lives on twenty acres and is running maybe multiple businesses out of it.
Right.
Including equipment related to the business and other kind of things, I mean, you might not ever even see it from the road, for one thing. And so there's, there, s- s- the characteristics of, of the parcel almost have to play into this somehow, it seems to me. I don't, I.
This, to me, fits more for a sub, not a subdivision ordinance, but
For subdivision.
Subdivision control.
Closely controlled.
And the one that your department's the most concerned about, you don't need to be concerned, because Lake of the Woods shuts them down before they ever get started, literally. I mean, uh, you can't look, you cannot have a delivery truck that you park at your house in Lake of the Woods unless you get a blank magnetic sign to cover up any words on the truck. That, and I, and, I mean, it's very well patrolled and enforced.
But that's.
Good, bad, or indifferent.
Yeah, but that's a private concern, we're, we're.
But, but, right, but what I'm saying is.
We don't need to do that.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, is here, the, the one that you're really concerned about, there's not really a need for concern, because they take care of it.
Well, I, I, I went to a, uh, what might almost be considered a home, uh, occupation, because I was on the planning commission, but they got the special use permit to, uh, to, to, uh, Lakeview, uh, uh, physical therapy. You know, and it's a home, it's a home that's been modified internally, uh, with, you know, appropriate parking and all that sort of stuff. So it's a, it's a, it's a different kind of thing, but it's in a, it's in a, uh, it's not in a subdivision kind of area. Uh, you know, so that its impact on the neighbors is pretty insignificant.
Right.
I, I think you'll find when you look at other localities, some localities have four, five, six different levels of home occupations, and they're really, I would argue that they're needed, 'cause you have different areas of the county, you have Lake of the Woods, Wilderness Shores, Somerset Farms, that might have different.
Different rules than, uh, than a rural area that's got a twenty-acre parcel and can't see their neighbors.
Absolutely, and that's the problem with the current regulation, it applies countywide.
Why don't we make two different sets of regulations?
That's what we attempted to do here with the home enterprise, but it sounds like we almost need maybe even a third. I would venture to say.
Oh, the, the, I, I guess in, in this, and sometimes I struggle to articulate it, but some things, you, you cause problems sometimes in government when you try to, to split hairs. And un- until we really have a problem, and, and I'm not aware of a, of a, of a monsoon of home enterprises that are causing problems or home occupations.
Have we had, have we had to deny permits? And why did we deny them?
I couldn't fit them within the current definition of a home occupation.
Then what was, what was the occupation that wouldn't fit?
Um, first was in, in Mark's district, the, um, taxidermist with the outside incinerator. And then the other one was the, uh, the horse therapy lady. Both completely appropriate for ag zoning, I don't think anybody would argue that, but I just.
But, but both of those are, both of those are not what ninety-nine percent of this even deals with.
Agreed.
I mean, first of all, I, I can't imagine why we, why we would say a, 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 a horse therapist. I don't even understand why that's a problem. That's a, if, if a horse therapist is agriculturally related, what, what are they?
I, I mean, I, I guess one of the concerns I have is if you look at other places in, in the ordinance, and I just did, I looked under the agricultural district at some of the uses, especially by special use permit. Within ag, with a special use permit, you can have a four thousand square foot, uh.
Farm market.
Uh, professional or contracting office. You can have four thousand feet of, uh, retail. You could have a vet's office, you could have outdoor power and watercraft, I mean.
So why not a, a horse therapist?
So, so why, yeah, why not a horse therapist sort of kill or, or, yeah.
Again, those are.
Crematorium or whatever the heck it was we were talking about.
Those are all principal uses, though, these are intended to all be ancillary to a house. So the problem right now is we have this huge gap in between full-blown SUP and home occupation, so the lady baking cakes.
But that's, but, but Josh, that's really a, that's a definition in search of, of a reason to. I mean, that's a, they, I, that leaves me cold. Okay, you, you can, so you can have, you can have it, a, 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 as long as it's the designated use, then, that, this goes back to, to, to Jim's point about subdivisions. The idea that what you're doing in your home must necessarily be bothering the guy who lives next door. So i- it's, it's okay to have a four thousand square foot clinic, but it's not okay to be a horse therapist. Because one of them, you're doing it out of your home, and the other one, you're doing it on, 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 you know.
In your backyard.
Being designated. And that, I, I have a real hard time wrapping my brain around that distinction in the real world. I mean, I, I understand that, that, because we're both talking about things that are allowed by right in ag zoning. So this accessory use versus that, I'm, I, I don't, I, I don't understand, I, I understand accessory use, but I don't understand the distinction that you're drawing in this case. Because I would rather be next door to someone who's using their home, who's living in their home and, and is an accessory use, they're doing horse therapy. I'd rather live next door to that than live next door to a four thousand square foot vet clinic.
Which is why this would be by right, and the vet clinic is an SUP, there's a, there's just this gap of intensity that we don't, we just don't permit. So this is all supposed to be expanding opportunities for things that we shouldn't have to be denying, like the horse therapy lady.
But that's not the way this reads.
We can certainly simplify it.
This, this reads to me as being, as being, you're getting much more, you're getting into a lot of restrictions and a lot of hoops to jump through.
Is there any particular part that was stuck in?
Well, like, the thirty percent gross floor area, forty percent of ag. No, I mean, inside the boundaries of the house, I'm not sure how much we care, other than they're not making meth or something like that.
I think there are rules against that.
Can I, can I make one observation that I think is escaping us? If we do nothing, just take this, throw it in the trash, do nothing, none of this is allowed. You're back, back to the home occupation, ancillary and minor use of the house. So technically, if we do absolutely nothing and just trash this, none of what you're discussing can be done under today's ordinance, so.
Well, but that's not really the point.
I, I'm just, I'm just trying to explain.
I, I understand that in, in some respects, this is loosening, this is broadening it, but it's also broadening it with, with callbacks, which is, which is more governmental interference in the process.
Can we broaden it without all of the, uh, the additional, I mean, there, there's, we brought up a couple that are, uh.
Well, part of it that I, I, where I have a major issue with most of the stuff of what we do. What is our enforcement method?
Complaints.
Yes.
Complaints.
It's all complaints.
Well, but it's, but that's, I mean, I.
Are people peering in people's windows, looking at their computers, seeing that they have four businesses?
We've also got things on, on the books that when people complain, we can't do anything about it.
Well, that is true too, that is true.
So. And so, so, and, and, and all we can do is go out there and go, you shouldn't be doing that.
So this.
And, and then six weeks later, we're back out there doing the same thing again, so why are we larding up our rules and regulations?
This is like our old trash ordinance, it's a violation of zoning, so we gotta go through all of the, uh, the legal processes, uh, if they're, is that right?
Well, the, the reality is that there's probably loads and loads of illegal businesses operating by the definition or zoning ordinance, that's almost a certainty.
And we don't have com- uh, many complaints on it.
And we don't get complaints, 'cause most people don't know, they're not peering in windows and they don't know what the people are doing in there. And, um, what, again, what prompted this was the person wanting to have the incinerator and would technically buy our narrow code language, that wasn't allowed, and that's sort of what prompted this whole, initiated this whole discussion to whether we wanted to expand home-based businesses, but the reality is, I, I, if I had to guess, I bet you eighty-plus percent of the home businesses that are operating.
Most of them probably don't even know that's supposed to have a permit.
Right, nobody knows it there.
Is there, maybe we just need to relook at this thing with the expanding, the, picking up the, the areas that we think are reasonable to have a, you know, I'm not sure that in a, in an area like Wilderness Shores or Lake of the Woods, we want an incinerator in the backyard. But I could see others a lot of areas.
I'll be stronger, I'm pretty sure we don't.
But, uh, in, in, in a rural area where the, you know, and so, uh, but I don't know, how do we, how do we pick that up? How do we allow these things that, uh, without having to?
Well, it seems to me that you could have a, you could have a home occupation of different rules depending on your zoning, so it's a different rule.
That's what I, that's what I was thinking, if this separate sets of ru- of rules that, uh, you know, uh, that, that focus on the disturbance to, or the impact on the neighbors.
We, we tried to do that, and I, I like that train of thought, 'cause it makes good sense, and that's why the home enterprises are only allowed in ag. They're not allowed in any other residential, that, that's why I mentioned, we don't really change home occup- They're not allowed in any other residential. That's why I mentioned, we don't really change home occupations as they currently are. You basically do them in A through R four. Home enterprises are strictly only in ag. To try to, to try to cover that, again, that gap.
Is there a reason for the number of people in the home enterprise if it's in ag?
Can I make one quick observation though? Josh and I were discussing this. We use that phrase ag, like that means it's agricultural land. We have subdivisions in this county. That are zoned ag and they're residential subdivisions. And so just saying ag zoning is sort of a misnomer too, because some of our ag zoning is really residential development.
Well, but those are, those are, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if they're ag zoning, they've got to be two acre minimum lots sizes. So that's a, that's a whole different.
Another quarter acre.
That's a whole different deal than, than, you know, four thousand square feet.
But depending on the configuration of your two acre lots, a lot of times those are narrow, long lots and the fact is the houses are right next to each other.
Understand.
That's right. That's, and there's, there is no, there is no crayon that works for all pictures. You can use that sometimes.
I'm recording this, you know.
All right. I, I still think that, uh, now.
Can, can we, can we have more time to, to go over this and take another bite at the apple?
And, and you might give us some, your thoughts on how you would do it by, by zoning. In other words, some of these pieces here that would apply to residentially zoned versus agriculturally zoned areas.
And maybe with some acreage.
Acreage in the agricultural zone.
That's funny because we actually went down that road initially and I thought the board probably won't buy that.
Sometimes we guess correctly.
Okay.
And I'm just, I want to belabor the point, but with these, you'll notice another parts of the ordinance, if we don't cover these administrative parts. Which I know are really mundane and we hate reading them because they add length, but if we don't cover these and specifically say these things, we just create these more loopholes and, and. Poor administrative practices and all the things that.
I'm not sure that it was the administrative practices that were, I think it was this list of eight, uh, ten, uh, different, uh. Restrictions or some of which, uh, uh, don't appear to have an impact on the neighborhood.
Got it. Well, I guess we will revise this, specifically paying attention to those two points, Lee, and, um, bring it back to another work session.
We do like to watch you work.
We're making stuff better, so this is, this is fun.
All right.
Gentlemen, Allison reminded me, you already scheduled this for a public hearing on the twenty.
May twenty-fourth.
For, May twenty-fourth. It's not advertised yet. It's not advertised, so why don't we pull that? And wait until you've worked through this and then as part of, once you've worked through this and if, at that point you want to advertise it, then we authorize.
Depending on how we work it as to whether or not, uh, we need to reroute it through the planning commission.
Yeah. If we put the work session, the May twenty-fourth or later.
Or, or later. I, there are some other things stacking up, so I'll sort of.
We gotta go official. All right. Five o'clock. All right, finish our work session. Let's, uh, call the meeting in order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have some, uh, changes to our agenda. We are moving new business, uh, which is night, right now, item number nine. We're gonna move that up and stick it as item number six, so it'll occur right after old business. And then the, uh, Department Director Constitutional Officers, County Attorneys Report and County Administrators Report will all move down one notch. There is a new item, uh, under, uh, the County Administrator's Report, uh, item, uh, which will now be nine B. Which will be the Comprehensive Services Act. And item, uh, uh, under the Department Director Constitutional Officer Reports, item B, the pavement rejuvenation will be, uh, will be removed. Are there any other changes?
No, sir, I do not have any.
If, if not, a good, a motion to approve is modified.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Uh, next is the, uh. Special presentations and appearances. Do we have any?
No, sir.
Okay. Next is the consent agenda.
To move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Uh, on to old business, the rezoning fifteens, zero dash, zero one, uh, Garrett Street, uh. Public hearing held back in January, continued from the April twelfth.
I'll just give a brief introduction. Now, if you recall, this has been deferred several times. The applicants were addressing some of the impacts and concerns that the board had raised at the previous meeting. And I believe they've hopefully satisfied some of those concerns at this point. And, um, they have a presentation they'd like to present, so I'll, I'll turn it over to them at this point.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Bob Springer. Uh, my brother Bill and I are the, uh, the two owners of Garrett Street LLC and this property. And at the risk of repeating myself, what I said several months ago, I'll just sort of rehash how we got here. We, when we bought this property a little over ten years ago, it had been rezoned for about a hundred and nineteen lots. About forty years ago. And so we bought it and we had an approved set of plans that we were ready to begin construction on and. But those plans had gone stale due to the downturn in the economy. They'd been sitting for a while. So when we came back to the county and begun speaking with the, uh, staff about how to develop it. We just felt like we could do a better job. We went and we looked at the cluster provisions in the code to see if we could do something there. But it just didn't work, so in discussions with staff and the engineers, we decided the best way to go would be to go to the R three zone. And what this allows us to do, we feel, is build a much more attractive development with more amenities. Trails, more open space that's increased by almost threefold from what we had before. And that's really the, that's the nexus of this whole rezoning application. We, um, feel like by proffering architectural components. That's one, okay. That, um, you know, in terms of a minimum square footage, certain types of building materials that would be used that were proffering. We can make everyone comfortable that the development will be an attractive and desirable. Product that would, that will be putting there. The pictures that you see here, and I think you've had before. Are homes that my brother and another partner built down in Gordonsville on a subdivision they have down there. Those lots sell in the range of forty-five thousand dollars. These that we're gonna do here, the lots just due to the cost of developing and what we've got in the land are gonna be in the seventy to eighty thousand dollar range. So we feel like these will give you a pretty good example of the types of homes that would be built there. Or at least a sort of a minimum level of what we'd be doing there. We are proffering minimum square footage, minimum roof pitch, different types of siding. To try and let, let it be known that we're not going in to try and build some type of, uh, inferior type of, of product there. And in terms of the layout, again, increasing the level of open space, putting trails in there. Reducing the, uh, the amount of damage we're giving to the streams and the, the general topography of the land. We feel like this creates a much more attractive environment for what we put in there as opposed to what we had before. We have, we were very cautious to make sure that you realize we're not doing anything to try and increase density. We actually reduced the number of lots we'd be putting there because that's not the objective of what we're doing to try and increase density in any way. So. That's pretty much the, the nexus of what we, what we're trying to accomplish here and. We hope you'll agree to, that what we're showing is better than what we had before.
Can you give us an update on the, uh, water situation?
We had agreed in the proffers that we were gonna, you know, our first choice as yours is would, was, excuse me. To, uh, hook up to the RSA water. We put in a request to them to do so. We thought, and we'd been told, our engineer had been told, we would have a chance to make a presentation to them about it, but he received an email.
Not a week ago, he changed.
Which, uh, where they denied our application for that. Now, we have since gone back to them, asked, you know, stating that we thought we had an, an opportunity to present that. But we've not heard anything back from them since then, except that it was not voted on by the Board of Supervisors, which we thought it would require. It was an administrative decision by the Green County Administrator and I think the attorney, the county engineer. And the county engineer saying that they just didn't feel it was appropriate and they were not gonna give us the water. So we're not, we're not giving up our pursuit of that, but we're not getting good feedback on the possibility that that's gonna happen.
Anything that you, you think you should add?
And we do have, again, because we know that water is a big issue, we've had, as you were, you heard two weeks ago, the, uh. Our hy- hydrogeologists, they're back again tonight, in case you have any additional questions for them regarding what we would do if we had to go. The route of a public water system that we would provide.
Question. Um, we spoke a couple of weeks ago, I guess it's been now. Um, it, it seemed that. The, the current zoning compared to the rezoning request, as far as water, probably both water and sewer. The requirements that precede the process and so forth are essentially identical, assuming RSA is not in the picture, said RSA aside. But otherwise, you're, the requirements state as well as the county requirements for, uh, water and sewer to get. To do the test wells and certifications and the like are, they're identical, whether there's a rezoning or not.
Correct.
And they have to be done upfront, whether there's a rezoning or not. You have to prove.
We have to prove there's water before we would come in with a preliminary plat to show a subdivision. If there's not water, we have to, we would have to adjust our proposed preliminary plat to reflect the water that we found.
Okay. I, I asked that question because it's, I, I've sort of been drawn to the, the, the only real. Uh, difference between the current zoning and the proposed zoning, uh, is the shifting in the use of the land. Didn't seem to me that there's anything else really going on, other than, as you said, there's some more open space and you preserve the, the stream in the buffering area for that. Uh, the density is virtually the same, uh, the entrance is the same. The, the setbacks in the buffering is essentially the same. There's some internal land use differentiation. But, but that appears to be the, the only significant difference. Did I, did I miss something in my review of that?
No, sir, you did not. What we, what we've got, uh, we have, we are using a smaller lot in order. And what we're using that smaller lot for is not to increase the density, but to increase the open space. There are a lot of streams out. There's a lot of topography on this site. And what we, the original plan that we actually purchased and the one that we were going to build on, just blasts through streams and it just, it, it, it. It doesn't reflect what, what we feel this, this property offers, which is a desirable location with nice streams and a nice potential for buffer zones. Trails around the streams. So that's, you know, that's the, that's the whole emphasis. It's making smaller lots and creating more open space.
Is that, would you agree with that?
Can we ask some of the architectural restrictions that are applied to the R three, or not if they are too?
When you're talking about a, uh, a, a semi-public-private well, uh, water supply, and you're also doing the same for the sewage?
Yes, sir.
Is there, uh, are you planning a homeowners association with the, the requirements to?
No, sir. The homeowners association would not own or operate either of those. We would, they would be operated by a large. Municipal water company. Uh, we've had discussions with Aqua Virginia about it and they, they would have an interest in operating both. And we, yeah, we would talk with others as well, but we had previously sold two water systems to Aqua Virginia. We know them. And, um, are comfortable with their, now they're, they're pretty much a nation, almost a nationwide water and sewer company. And, uh, we feel very comfortable in their both financial and technical abilities to, to manage a project like this.
And from, from what I've seen over time, the, the relationship between the homeowner and such a company is not all that different than a homeowner in a municipal water system, really.
There are problems that arise all the time with some of them, but I mean, again, they're a, they're a large company, they're a licensed company and yes, sir, I'm, I'm sure they have their problems.
Will they own the, uh, system? They will own it.
That would be our plan, yes, sir. They will own both systems.
They're RSCC regulated.
Huh?
They would be regulated by the State Corporation Commission, or are regulated by the State Corporation Commission.
Okay. Anybody else have, uh, questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Anyone interested in making a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second for discussion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Can I, can I make a couple of suggested amendments to your motion? There's no, there's no written, uh, approval resolution in the packet.
I, I was looking for it. I didn't see, I thought it, we had it at one time, didn't we?
Yeah, we did, but there's not one there today, so I, I would ask that you include in your motion that public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practice is what your motion is based upon. And that it also includes acceptance of the proffers that were submitted. So if that works for you.
That would be my motion.
That's the motion.
And that's the second. Thank you. Discussion.
I, I guess as I said earlier in my question to the applicant, it is, I, I, it seems this has now boiled down to, uh. Really a site layout question more than anything else and I could see the, the merits in, in changing to this site, the layout. Although the, the differences are fairly modest, this seems to be a, an improvement that's headed in the right direction.
On what's already approved.
Basically, from what's already approved. It's, th- this is not a revolutionary rezoning. It's a. Minor change for.
So, if it cannot be implemented, uh, then it basically becomes a fantasy that doesn't really, I mean, we could talk about putting a high-rise apartment building there or whatever. It, if it, if it can't be done, then there's no sense in using that as a, as a point of comparison. Uh, the applicant said he's not asking for greater density, but that's exactly what he's doing. Density is the number of people in a certain space, and by definition, a duplex is greater density. Uh, by, by definition, taking the same number of housing units and putting them on smaller amount of acreage is greater density. So, what he is doing is going for greater density here, and, and I don't blame him for that. He's a businessman, he's gonna do what he feels he has to do to, 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 uh, make the most profit off of his investment. But the fact of the matter is, what this re-do, rezoning allows is to cram those greater number of dwelling units onto a smaller area, and thus make it possible to have that many dwelling units on that piece of property.
Under the old zoning.
If he does it under the old zoning, I don't think there's any way he can get there. Now, let me back up. Yeah, there is a way he can get there. He could go in and he can completely level that site from, from border to border, and he'll have to deal with the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers and spend who knows how many millions of dollars to, to accomplish that. It's not a, I don't believe it's, it's, I, I'm not holding myself up as a, as an expert, but I just simply don't think it's a, it's a, it's a viable plan.
So, you're saying that under the existing zoning, just the practical limitations would keep it at far less than the number of housing units that's currently proposed?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, you could take, imagine, imagine a piece of property that's, you know, basically shaped like this. I can, I can draw, I can have a plat drawn up showing that I'm gonna put a thousand houses in there.
But the plat doesn't show the-
But the reality is that I can't, and so using that, as I've said, as a comparison, I, I don't think is, is, is valid. Uh, and, you know, I have a concern about when you increase density, you increase trouble, you increase, the closer people are, the more they rub up against one another and, and irritate each other. And, except for Lake of the Woods, it doesn't happen there. Um, I mean, that's why we live in the country, because we don't want to rub up against people so close. So, I mean, you get, you're gonna, you're gonna get, you know, more, more police trips out there, and, and, of course, there's, there's all the other impacts, but, uh, I, I don't think, and, and I'm, I'm all for, I'm all for some growth in Orange County, I, I'm, I'm, I'm even for some growth in the western end of the county, because I think we need some balance, or else eventually there'll be four districts on the eastern end of the county, and District One will go all the way to mine run. Uh, so there, there needs to be some balance, but I, I don't think that this extremely dense housing is, I don't think it's what, uh, is best for Orange County, and I don't think it's what most Orange County citizens, uh, want. So, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna vote, uh, against the, uh, motion.
Do we have any, any idea what, how much of a change, I mean, what does your, what does your intuition tell you that, that the, the difference in terms of what, of this layout versus the, what he could practically get into the other? I mean, I, I could only see the property from basically standing on one of the driveways, and so I, I'm not, I don't have-
I don't, I, I don't know, and if I threw out a number, I'd just be making it up off the top of my head.
But it sounds like you think it's significant.
It would be less, and I think significantly.
Right, that's, that's where I was.
Jim?
I have a concern very similar to Mr. Johnson's with the density in that section of the county, where my true concern is. Uh, I, I just don't, I don't believe that the density is appropriate, and I believe, and, and the pictures are great, but contrary to what y'all are bringing up, I don't think it's going to bring it to a higher level of a community by upzoning. I, I have concern about the R3.
Anything more you want to say about it, Jim?
No.
Okay. Teal?
My, my issue is water.
Is what?
Water. And, and I've spoken with Bob and explained that was still my biggest hangup is the RSA. Uh, with that, I'd be much more likely to say yes, because I like the design better, but, um, I agree, it, it is increased density, because I've looked at the topo maps, and no, you're not gonna get that many on there. Uh, so, yeah, I would, I would not support it as is. If, if they were to get an RSA hookup, then I could be, I could be more convinced to, to change my vote.
Okay.
Well, I agree, I, I agree with that. I, I, from the very beginning, have been concerned about the water, uh, and, uh, I, I think they, they, in any case, they should pursue, continue to pursue the RSA connection, because I think that, that results in a much better project, whichever zoning they, they end up trying to use. So, I think that the, their, their commitment to continue that process, I think, is, is an important part of this, whichever zoning they end up with.
I, I agree with Teal on that.
Absolutely.
My, my concerns pretty much reflect what I've already heard from everybody else. All right. Any further discussion? Allison, roll call.
Yes, sir. Mr. Goodwin?
Nay.
Mr. Croacher?
Nay.
Mr. Frame?
Nay.
Mr. Johnson?
Nay.
Mr. White?
Uh, yeah, yeah, since I made the motion, I'll look for my own motion.
All right. Motion is defeated, four zero, or four one. All right. Uh, next item is, uh, let's see, new business, resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2017 operating and capital budgets.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we started this process, uh, a number of months ago. We went through, uh, a, a lot of territory between now and then, a reassessment, if you recall that happening a long time ago. Uh, we've had the public hearing, uh, we've adopted the tax rates, and so we went a bit down to actually adopting the budget. Part of that, uh, process included, uh, quite a bit of, of collaboration and work between myself and the school superintendent, Dr. Tanner, and, and also, uh, by extension, the school board and your, this board, of working through, uh, some of the opportunities and some of the challenges that the school board faced this year. I'm pleased to report to you, the school board has, uh, reached a, a proposal to use the allocation of the 511,000, uh, which does require, uh, use of the one-time funds to, to achieve some of their, uh, their goals for this year's budget. I've communicated that to you today, also the, the email that captured a conversation the superintendent and I had last night after the work session, um, and I appreciate her midnight hour, uh, communication and, and things. So, I gave, and then I've called you all today to talk about this, uh, this matter. So, uh, we've adopted, uh, or out in front of you is a draft resolution that is a bit revised, Glenda, I'm looking, Glenda, from what was there. So, we're, we're teed up on the resolution. Uh, Dr. Tanner's here, certainly members of the school board, Mr. Bryant's here, and if you have any questions about, uh, the resolution, I'm not gonna go through the elements, but, um, unless you'd like Dr. Tanner to, or like me to. So, right now, we're ready to, to adopt subject any discussion modifications you all may have, gentlemen.
Okay. Any more questions for, uh, Brian? Any questions for the, uh, Senator Tanner or anyone, or the school?
I actually just have a comment. This is an appropriate time.
To get things started, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Do I have a motion, a second? Now, we're open for discussion.
I would just like to make a comment that I truly appreciate all the work that has been done, school board, superintendent, county administrator, and the board. Collectively, I don't think this is somewhere that we could've, a few years ago, come to a reasonable conclusion for all this. We tried to, everyone has tried to do the best that we can for the citizens of the county, and it's not a bountiful year, I guess is the best way of putting it, but it's one where we've been able to do majority of what's needed to be done, and I just greatly appreciate the work of everybody combined, and especially the work of the school board and the superintendent.
Any further comments or, uh, discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to, um, uh, echo what Jim said, but also, I, I wanted to talk a little bit, this is the first, um, I believe I'm correct in the timing here, this is the first budget process that we've gone through, uh, since we adopted the financial policies. Is that, I'm correct in that, correct? Um, and it, it occurred to me that probably, uh, many people in Orange County don't, uh, aren't familiar with the financial policy guidelines that the board adopted, and, um, so I, I just wanted to briefly talk about that a little bit, uh, because they go directly to, um, how the board sees their, their role moving forward and how they will decide, uh, uh, not just this budget, but, but budgets moving forward, and obviously, their elections happen, but at this point, this is the way the, the, the train is moving. Uh, the, the opening paragraph says, "Orange County will have appropriately scaled local government services and programs that are funded at levels to sufficiently meet the needs and expectations of our citizens and businesses, consistent with the revenues and economic capacity of the county." And then it, it goes into, into several parts. It's actually not very long, it's, it's, a lot of it's double-spaced, it's about seven and a half pages long, so I encourage everybody here to, uh, if you're interested, uh, print out a copy of it and read it, but let me just hit a couple of high spots. Uh, "Effective, uh, financial policy," uh, and then some bullet points, "contributes significantly to the county's ability to insulate itself from fiscal crisis, so we're not acting from year to year and scrambling around trying to figure out what, how we're gonna fix all the holes in the, in the, in, uh, in the ship this year. It promotes long-term financial stability by establishing clear and consistent guidelines. It directs attention to the total financial picture of the county rather than single-issue areas, and it facilitates the development of operating and capital budgets, which balance competing priorities for financial support, including operating costs, reserves, debt service, capital expenditures, community and economic initiatives, and quality of life when considering potential future revenues." And, uh, then it goes into tax revenue generation, uh, policy, and in that policy, the, the, the header reads thusly, "The overall policy is not to raise tax rates and to do so only in cases where the county must meet legal mandates, fund specific capital projects, or when a revenue source is significantly diminished." Uh, and a couple of bullet points there, "The county budget should be based on plans to achieve specific outcomes and the assessment of priorities rather than simply across-the-board increases." And skipping down to the fifth bullet, it says, "The board's first priority is to expand the county's economy as a growing source of tax revenue, to lessen the tax burden on residential real estate, which currently funds 24% of the total consolidated annual budget," which, of course, includes the school budget, which a lot of state money comes into. Uh, it then goes into debt policies and capital improvement plan, and, uh, there's some, there's some accounting boilerplate in there, because, uh, Glenda would have been barred from any future conventions of county government, uh, financial officers if we didn't put that in there. But, um, my, my point is just that we're trying real hard to make this a, a consistent and, and reasonable process, uh, where we don't, uh, just reflexively hit the, the tax increase button. Uh, instead, we're trying to build, uh, what we're calling organic growth into the process, trying to increase economic development, so that the, the county, as it grows, as it has more needs, whether they're education, or law enforcement, or public safety, uh, whatever, uh, that the, that organic natural growth will, will fund the, will fund the increased needs. Now, uh, I'm not Pollyanna, I'm sure at some point, we're going to have to raise taxes, um, uh, that happens, uh, because we have economic downturns and so forth and so on, but, um, I don't want to belabor the point beyond that. Again, I've, I would, this is a real, this is not just something we did to be pretty or to say, hey, we did something today. Uh, this was a, this is our actual policy guidelines when it comes to finances moving forward, and, uh, I think it's important that, that, uh, the citizens and, and, uh, everyone that is, is interested, uh, understands that and, and understands, uh, the position that has been taken.
Mr. Chairman?
One more element in the financial policies, I think it's important, and this budget reflects it, is the establishment of the capital projects fund. Anyone who looks back over the past ten years or so of the county's budget, you'll, an O-YO-YO will pop out, uh, very quickly at, at capital spending, you know? It was used as the throttle, uh, to balance the budget, along with tax changes and other kinds of things, but it, uh, there was at least one year that I recall where it was actually zeroed. There might have been really good, good calls for having done that, that year, that's not my point. My point is, what we're trying to do here with these policies, particularly the capital projects fund, is put some discipline in the process, such that we recognize that things like ambulances are gonna wear out. We should plan every year for buying a piece of that new ambulance when the time comes that we have to buy, and that's true with many of the capital items that we have to replace, whether it's a computer, uh, or a breathing apparatus for fire, or, or whatever. I, I think it's critically important that within these policies, we, we have introduced that discipline and planned for it, and, and we're going to treat as a priority funding those, uh, those elements of the capital projects fund. So, I would point to that as well as, as something that is, uh, I, I think in the best interest of the citizens of the county long run, and certainly, it's good, it's good practice, good financial planning practice.
Teal?
I'm fine, Jim.
Nope, I'm good with what?
And I do what I want.
Both of them said as well.
Well, I'm glad that, uh, the, uh, school board has done a good job, and the, uh, Brian has done a good job, and I think we've got a, we've had a good result here. I think the, uh, the thing to be looking at is, it's very easy for government to grow. Uh, there's always, oh, we need to do this, we need to do that, you know? And, and trying to sort through those and, and, uh, recognize, okay, well, how much growth can we have, how much more revenue do we get, and where do we allocate it? Those are gonna be tough decisions all along, and they're not gonna get any easier. Uh, and so, uh, I think we've done a good job in this budget, and, uh, I'm ready to call the vote. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Budget is approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, next item is the award of the contracts for airport engineering and consulting services. Uh, next item is the award of the contracts for airport engineering and consulting services.
Good evening, gentlemen. In early March, I released a solicitation for airport engineering and consulting services to provide planning and professional engineering advice for our airport projects. We received two qualified responses, and we would like to extend contract offers to both of those vendors. One of them is our current vendor, Delta Airport Consultants. The second vendor is Talbot and Bright, who's worked for several of our surrounding counties. And we have approved funding for the potential projects in FY seventeen. Contract would be for one year with four one-year renewals.
Any questions for?
So moved.
I have a motion to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you.
Uh, Orange County Public Schools Wide Area Network and Broadband Project, Mr. Peter O'David.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Uh, this is a project well-known, uh, to the Board. Uh, I think we've been working on it since seven years, no. Seven months.
Just seems like.
But, uh, I, I, I feel pretty good of where we are. We certainly briefed the Board. Um, there was a presentation given by Mr. Hadfield, um, back on April twelfth. I, I'm certainly prepared to answer any questions, but I think we're poised to, uh, uh, submit the application by the deadline. Uh, the Finance Director has identified the source of funds, and so tonight's action is simply to commit, uh, the, uh, local match and transfer, subject to approval, the Federal Communications E-Rate Grant, one hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy cents for this, uh, project. And then, uh, the second, there's a second, uh, let me stop there before that first action, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Brian on the, on, uh...
I know, Mr. Daryl's here.
Authorizing the, uh, funding of the, uh, county's, uh, match on this? Okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, there's people much smarter than my, me about the project here, so... Um, so if, if you would take action on that, then, uh, the second is, um, the, the actual contract. So a motion on the first, recommend.
Oh, you want to, separate motions?
Yes, sir.
So move on the first one.
Okay.
One comment on it. They seem to have come up with more acronyms than, uh, we as the Board have been able to come up with, so, Mr. Goodwin, I put you up to the challenge, so...
I'd also like to make a comment to follow up on my previous one. Uh, this might be the, uh, one of the first applications of the said Capital Projects Fund that I was talking about before, so, uh, proof that it works.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's nice to have, uh, sort of an orderly process where you, you, uh... When you, uh, come up against something like this, you're not scratching your head and wondering how you're gonna do it. You say, "Okay, we're gonna, we can use this avenue over here," so, yeah.
And once again, the collaboration between the two boards and staffs.
Okay. Did we get, did I get a second on this?
Yes. Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's outstanding. I, um, of course, it was very fortuitous timing, uh, all the way around, but, uh, yeah, the way that the, uh, uh, the schools and the, and the administrative staff have worked together has been fabulous.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Oh, on item one, authorizing the appropriation of transfer from the Capital Project Fund. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next, just as a footnote, I've, uh, had a conversation with Senator Warnerstaff yesterday, and Congressman Bratt's District Director. I haven't had and will have one with Senator Kane. We're going to, I'll send them a letter asking for them, uh, to express written support to the Federal Communications Commission in support of our grant application, and have their, uh, Washington staff kind of fair, uh, follow along with this through the grant decision-making process at the commission. So, uh, and I'll copy you when we receive those letters in, as well as the, the School Board.
It's my understanding this could take quite a number of months for, to, to find, to receive approval on that. So I, I say that just to sort of temper the expectation. We're, you know, we're, we're not gonna start laying anything in the ground by Memorial Day or something like that.
Thank you, Mr. White. Yes, we want actually more time to kind of sort ourselves out after this kind of pace that we've been on to get to this day. Next is, uh, a corollary to the, the schools project is how the county can leverage this fiber project with additional fiber strands using the same contractor. Uh, I've gone in through the details of how we would do this, but we would need authorization, um, staff to go forward to, um, how to leverage this project with our last-mile broadband initiative, as well as the public safety telecommunications project, other general government users and potential private sector users, about the towers and so forth. Um, I, I know Stephanie and the county attorney can give you kind of the wheres and whys and wherefoes, but the idea is, we'd have that developed as a draft with, uh, the school-selected contractor. We'd refer that back to the broadband subcommittee, or later this evening, if you move forward with the broadband authority, then this would be, be tasked over to, to that entity. But this way, it gets us going and positions us with the contractor to take advantage of all of this.
And, and I think this is possible because the, the school asked for, uh, options and enhancements and the like in, in their original solicitation. So that's, is that, I think that's the, the basis for this.
Yeah, I, I, Stephanie, why don't you, thank you, 'cause that was a salient point to all of this.
Yes, sir. Um, the school's RFP had a cooperative clause in it, and their contract actually spells out that they can reorder or change orders, and any user of that contract can do so as well. So we would essentially piggyback the contract that I drafted for the schools, which gives us permission to order basically whatever we need at those predetermined rates.
Okay. So can I get a motion to authorize the staff to develop the proposed contract?
So moved.
Uh, I have a motion, and do I have a second?
Well, both seconds is what I'll second.
Okay, double seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, next item is, uh, Tourism Quarterly Report.
Just can't do anything with some people out there.
I thought I heard a vote out there somewhere.
That was a six-oh vote. I wanted to make sure that goes into the bill.
Is it a six-oh, or do we have two?
Good evening, gentlemen. Before you have the snapshot of the Tourism Quarterly Report for the first quarter of two thousand and sixteen, as you can see, the Visitor Center visitation is up, which is a, um, a good thing to see on our behalf. Um, and one thing that we've decided to do to help increase visitation to our visitor centers so that people just don't use our digital, uh, media, is that we have started a postcard program, where the postcards will only be available at the visitor center and only by request. We've ordered a certain amount of them, so that way we can track how many people are using that, and if that was an effective way of increasing traffic to the visitor center. So we've instructed all of our, um, volunteers on how to, to do this program, and we launched it last Saturday. So hopefully, in the upcoming months, I'll be able to give you an update on how that is going. We plan on having, uh, different attractions and different seasons on the different postcard. And as you can see in the Quarterly Report, this is the first one we've done, Gilmore Cabin in, at Montpelier. Um, also, you can see our website visitation, um, it is up as well. But we continue to work on our website redesign, which we know will increase these numbers tremendously by mobile usage. And so we are hoping to have that, the first template of that, or the redesigned template of that, in the next couple of weeks. They've asked us for the EPS files for our new logo and tagline, which we've given to them, so the new templates are, should be forthcoming, with the different added things that we had in there, like the Google Calendar and the embedded video and the responsive design and the different elements that we've asked for. Love artwork update, it is completed. It is beautiful. We did not want to put a picture in here because we didn't want to steal the thunder from the unveiling and everything. Um, Steve Stokes from Gordonsville did a phenomenal job on it. He actually had it sitting out at his facility in Keswick and had numerous people stop by and want to take pictures with it. And one group, one couple from Michigan, Steve said, stopped in there and said that they had visited numerous ones of these across the state, and this was the best one that he had, that they had seen. So that was very encouraging. Um, we do plan an unveiling for later on in the spring. Um, we're working with John Cooley in the Town of Orange right now to do the concrete base for it. It got moved today out to the storage at Booster Park. We're storing them out there. It did take two people to move each individual letter, because as we had spoken about before, this will be mobile and be, be able to be taken to different events and different attractions around the county. Um, it does take two people, it is made of steel, so it's quite heavy, but it is, uh, very striking. So we're looking forward to having an unveiling as soon as we can get a timetable from, uh, Mr. Cooley in the Town of Orange about that.
Christmas tree ornaments come to my s- mind as a new revenue center for tourism.
Oh, you think so? Thank you. Why would that come to mind in the middle of April when it's an eighty-degree day outside?
Christmas tree ornaments of our love artwork.
Oh, yes, it could be. We already do Christmas, a series of Christmas tree ornaments for our volunteers each year, so...
Are those of new designs from past years?
The Drive Tourism Grant, um, we did submit our application on time and had it reviewed, uh, prior to our submission. Um, we are waiting to hear whether we receive the grant or not. I've got preliminary indication from Steve Gallion from Virginia Tourism Corporation that it is very likely that we will be receiving our grant. He was very impressed with our application, and he doesn't foresee any issues with it. The, um, reviewing committee will be contacting me if they have any question, any questions, but he was very positive about it. So we're hoping and looking forward to, to that call anytime now. A couple of things that we have upcoming, um, we have the Virginia Association of Conventions and Visitors bureaus are holding their Spring Quarterly Meeting at Montpelier on May eighteenth and nineteenth. We have a, a schedule of, of seminar topics involved, as well as a tour of Montpelier. We're gonna have a reception the evening of the eighteenth at the Market at Grellum, showcasing, uh, Orange County wines and food and the such. And then the nineteenth will conclude with, uh, more seminars. So we're hoping that you all will be able to join us for our reception. A formal invitation will come out as soon as we finalize all the details. And lastly, um, the Tourism Office, along with Rose Deal and Stephanie Straub, will be reviewing RFPs this week for our graphic design, uh, contract. Um, we have used DIA for three years, and it was time to do a new RFP to get, uh, proposals in, so we've received...
It was a twenty-some, wasn't it? It was a lot.
Yeah, it was. It was like two dozen of responses, all very well-qualified. So, uh, we're gonna be meeting this Thursday to review those and, and see what comes of that. And DIA did, uh, send in a new proposal, so they are part of the mix as well, so... Do y'all have any questions?
Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, item, uh, is the County Attorney's Report.
I have nothing.
All right, next is County Administrator's Report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. The first item I have is the Germana Wilderness Area Plan Steering Committee update, and then, uh, a matter concerning, uh, Comprehensive Services Act that, uh, Alicia Vines will help me with. First on, on the GWAP. Uh, last week, um, the committee met, uh, the focus was economic development, and two matters became for the committee. One was development of an incentive policy that actually would be more of a county-wide's application, but then also, uh, would certainly be available in the, in the Germana Wilderness Area. Mr. Miller presented that to the committee. Essentially, it was what was the, um, the incentive policy. It was part of the Enterprise Zone application that we worked with Town of Gordonsville, Town of Gordons to submit. Uh, we weren't successful in, but embodied in that was, uh, basically an incentive policy. Uh, Mr. Miller has converted that into a county policy. Uh, the committee heard that and agreed that this was something that we needed to do. At least from our staff perspective, right now, we have no written policy. We have incentives, and we'll meet a business's needs if they're interested in creating jobs or, or, or making a business investment. But as far as a written policy to fall back on, if the business, for instance, may not be well-capitalized, may not have a good business history, may not be a desirable business, we have nothing to, to winnow out whether they meet a threshold or not. The committee recommended it be, and it was referred to the EDA, uh, for their review, and eventually, if they recommend adoption of it, it'll come to you all for formal adoption. So we're, we're thinking probably a June timeframe on that. The other was to, uh, better understand our market conditions out there for particularly retail development in the Germana Wilderness Area. And, um, uh, I, I think we were all kind of holding our breath to find out what some of the information that Tommy had, and, and really, our density, our household income's pretty good, but our density is not necessarily there. Our vehicle trips on Route Three are really not there to, to attract, I think, what would be a high-end retailer, either in food service or in, in goods. But, uh, I think that information, uh, was taken under advisement by the committee, and at some point in the future, we may be in a better position from a, a marketing standpoint that our, our socioeconomic data fits the profile of a national, um, type of retailer or food service. So I look at, gentlemen...
To me, the interesting aspect of that part of the discussion is the, uh, the data that Tommy had put together, where what he called leakage, which is essentially purchases outside the county, has actually continued to go, to go up. It's now almost a hundred million dollars. Think of that, think of the sales tax on a hundred million dollars and things that we could do with that. Uh, so the dilemma is, we, we, there's a hundred million dollars leaving the county, but yet we're, we're not really densely populated or have enough population in some cases to curb that and, and attract those, those businesses. And so, uh, therein lies the, uh, the dilemma that we're facing. And that part of what we hope, the, the successful Germana Wilderness, uh, implementation will, will begin to, uh, chip away at. But it's, it is a big number. We've known for some time, all the way back to the Gateway Study, it was a big number. I think the number back at, at that point, which was five, six years ago, was, yeah, eighty-six million. And now it's almost a hundred, and so, and growing, obviously. It would, sort of describes the issue.
Anything more, any questions on that? All right, next is the Comprehensive Services Act.
Yes, sir. Um, I'm willing to invite Ms. Vines up, uh, one of, this is one of the, comes in is, uh, this, this no-surprises rule. Uh, as you know, Comprehensive Services Act is a, a large program that, uh, is administered by the county. I think the budget's about two-point some, or one-point-eight...
It's one-point-nine this year.
One-point-nine million dollars, so that's a significant amount of state money and a significant amount of local funds go into that. It is one of these programs that it's a contingency. You do the best that you can, but then there can be some extraordinary circumstances that then, uh, create, uh, budgeting, uh, problems. We're, we're on, she's here to tell you what we're facing with. It's not, we, we've come up with a source of funds to cover it, but we're, we're kind of dialing it in on what it is now, so Alicia. With that omniscience, entre.
I just wanted to give you guys an idea of kind of what we've been seeing this year. Um, Latisha is actually, um, already at the CSA Conference, which is where I'm headed right after this in Roanoke, so we'll hopefully get some good information on that. But what we're looking at this year, um, as of April twentieth, we have serviced a hundred and twenty-three families, or children and families. Uh, my last report that I provided you, um, was a hundred and twenty-one, and the same reporting time last year was eighty-nine. So we're seeing an increase in, in kiddos that we're seeing year-to-date.
Eighty-nine to a hundred and twenty-three?
No, eighty-nine at this time last year to a hundred and twenty-three.
This, uh, this year?
This year, sir.
Year-over-year.
Yeah. Um, this year-to-date, we have sixty-one children in foster care. Last year at this time, we only had twenty-six. Um, we have forty-five open cases right now that are foster care, so we're seeing...
Do we know why the, the, the big increase?
There's many different reasons. We're seeing a lot of cases of severe abuse and neglect. A couple of the cases recently that I know specifically of have been severe. Couple of the cases recently that I know specifically of have been severe.
Is this more attention from Child Protective Services?
I couldn't tell you that.
Okay.
So, so we have a dramatic increase in our foster care kids. Our IEP private day placement kiddos did drop. Last year at this time, we had thirteen. Right now, this year, we have eleven, which is proof that the little elementary kiddos, we just actually had one come home into the program that they started this year. I know that was a question last time, how well the program was doing. Well, they're bringing kids home, so that's wonderful. Let's see. Our parental agreements, we have four kids in a residential treatment center right now. Last year, we had one. We have special ed wrap kids. We have five. So it's just everything that we're seeing this year is, is a dramatic increase than what we had last year.
So translating that to where we're potentially over budget or going, the number that we know right now is about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
And that was given even prior to, last Monday, I panicked and called Brian, because we had just taken four more kids into foster care last Monday. So that number was even before taking those four kids in, in our projections for the remainder of the year. So I anticipate an increase in the funds that we're going to need.
So what, what we're doing today is just getting you, one, aware of this. Two, last meeting in May, first meeting in June, as the finance director counseled me, we won't know the sum certain, but we'll have a better estimate of what the, what the overage is. And then she's already identified potential funding sources of up to two-hundred thousand dollars at this point in time. You know, we're hoping, we're stopping where we are right now, but we just don't know between now and then. So we'll, we'll keep working. And if something dramatic happens, and I don't want to measure what that means, but we'll certainly, I'll communicate to you all directly, but otherwise anticipate us coming back for a supplemental appropriation, probably in June, but at least with a status report late May, beginning of June.
How does our budget for next fiscal year deal with this? Are we, are we close to our old budget, or are we-
We, we stayed at where we were this year. And the reason we did that, last year, we did a reduction, because the last time I had to come and ask for a preparation or supplemental funding was in February of two thousand and eleven. And at that time, I know that was a, it was a big, a lot bigger than what we're asking for now or hope to ask for this year. So that next budget year, we had increased it to two-point-three. Since then, we had not spent above the one-point-nine. And so that's what we backed it back down to for the last budget year, and we stayed at that this year. And then all of a sudden, it's-
Under the theory that, you know, many years make a trend, but here-
This year, it has blown the trend out of the water.
So we're looking at the same, if, if this kind of level of support required?
If this level is, is what we maintain, yes. I do know, in talking to other localities, Louisa is seeing the same trend we are right now with foster care, taking children into foster care. So the other localities are seeing the same things we're seeing right now, which is kind of scary all around, but it's not just Orange County.
Is there any kind of statistic that sort of correlates to any of this?
Not that I'm aware of, but I would be happy to get with Ms. Middleton, and we can look at everything.
We don't see big shifts in employment or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of. It's-
I know heroin has been a-
And that's what some of our kids have come into foster care for, too, is during drug raids and stuff like that. I know of one particular family, they brought in five kids at one time. That was in one house. So we're taking in a lot of kids at one time. It's not just one here, one there. So we're, we're also running out of in-county foster home placements as well, because we have so many kids in foster care right now. And so if we take more kids in, and we don't have placements for them, we might have to place them out of county, which means they may go into a therapeutic foster home, which means more dollars. So we're, we're working on recruitment of foster families and just everything that we can do right now. So.
So you're saying next year's budget was closer to what this year's budget was?
It was the exact same.
Yes, sir. The exact same.
So if this kind of level of support is required, we're gonna see the same kind of bite in the next fiscal year?
Yeah, well, I think, I'll certainly give, give Alicia credit. She's, the fact and the CPMT are the gatekeepers to, to this, and, and she has focused them that there are finan, there's financial implications with their decision, not to diminish the needs that are met for the children that are there. And if you ever want to heartbreak just some of the situations-
Come, come to one of our meetings.
Come to one of their meetings, and that, that's an eye-opening experience.
I've been to one a long time ago.
If you want to feel depressed when you get home.
But she is, is certainly getting them focused on, on kind of the stewardship of these, these local, these dollars. So we'll see if we need to make some mid-year corrections next year, I guess, in the short line. And then this budget cycle, I mean, we just adopted a budget, and we're, you know, we're gonna now start getting ready for another one. So we'll keep that in mind.
I mean, it, almost anything you keep track of in life, there's gonna be peaks and valleys. I mean, I wouldn't hit the panic button that this is gonna become the new reality, because it may just be a, I mean, we're still talking relatively small numbers here. I mean, we're talking thirty-five. And when you say five of them came from one home, I mean, the thirty, the increase is thirty, roughly thirty-five. So, you know, you can have a few kind of unusual situations that can, that can make our numbers spike.
And the case managers are doing a wonderful job of trying to figure out if there are, you know, can we bring kids home sooner, you know, are they ready? And they're not bringing them home just to bring them home, but they're really looking at the cases and seeing, you know, what, what can we change a little bit? So the, the case managers are working very hard as well.
We should be able to get some feeling for the, the kids that we have in foster care now, what the prospects are for those kids returning home. I mean, we should have some, some idea. I mean, if you've got a-
The, the ones, I can tell you, the ones that we took last Monday, it was not anticipated that they were gonna be in foster care very long. They did end up having to split the siblings up into four different homes to place them within the county. But they anticipate that they won't be in care very long.
They're relative or something that's gonna pick them up?
Do I? I'm sorry.
Is there a relative or somebody to pick?
I'm not sure on this case. I have not gotten all the particulars yet on this particular case. But we are trying to seek relatives and, and everything else to kind of place these kids in a safe environment. That's our main concern.
So as Mr. Johnson's word, not hitting panic button, but just wanted to get this in front of you.
What's that?
Not hitting any panic buttons, just wanted to get this in front of you.
All right.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Alicia.
All right. Should we go to, into-
You ready?
Read our words here.
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss enclosed meeting the following: Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating portion of public body; and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel; Discussion concerning respective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry, where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities into the community; and two matters concerning the salary or performance of specific personnel. Whereas pursuant to Sections two-point-two, thirty-seven, eleven, eighty-one, eighty-five, and eighty-seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussion may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved. The Board of Supervisors of Orange County does hereby authorize discussion before said matters in closed meeting. Need that in form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You bring me ice cream?
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
All right. Next item on the agenda is board comment. Does anybody have anything they want to comment about?
Actually, I, I do. I was gonna do it earlier, but I, I'll use board comment. As I mentioned to some of you in, in passing, there are a number of specific sections of our ordinances that have come to my attention over the past several years that seem to be presenting confusion to constituents, as well as staff and others. And I, I think it's time and appropriate to find a way of addressing those, whether, whether we form a, a committee to go, this is, this is a very narrow, selective, I don't know the number of, of sections that we're talking about, but it's, it's a handful. It's not a rewrite of anything. We, we have done a few of those that have been brought to our attention by the zoning administrators the past year or so, but a, a little bit more organized fashion. I, I mention a committee because I think it's important to, to be able to sit and really talk about what is the policy objective, and does the language accomplish that, and these kind of things. And, you know, a lot of time could be spent on, on doing that. And my thought is that, just as we've done with other areas like the financial policies, is we have a committee begin that process, and as appropriate, bring it to the board, probably initially in a work session forum to talk about, and then maybe subsequent public hearings and board action as, as appropriate. But I, I do think it's something that we need to invest some time in.
When you're, when you're talking about that area, does Josh have a, a bunch of specific things that he's got problems with?
He does have-
Do we have some other areas where-
He has an initial list. I don't have it, but-
No, no, sorry.
But he, he has an initial list of about a half a dozen different areas. And it, it gets complicated, because there's a section that will say something, maybe with some ambiguity, but it relates to another section, which relates to another section, which relates to another section. And by the time you complete that loop, you have no idea where you started. And, and it's, I mean, it's, it's, you know, not, not a surprise, because some of these languages have been tinkered with and written over a course of decades in some cases. And so, but it seems to me that maybe with the assistance of county attorney and Josh, and possibly county administrator as well, but, but a supervisor or two, certainly no more, no more of a, of a group than that. You get, you know, you get fifteen people.
I can bring you the one from nineteen seventy-nine. It was only thirteen pounds long.
That's right.
And in some instances, that may be better.
I mean, I, there's a case right now in my, in my district.
That's right.
The case in my district right now, where one of these situations is, is causing some issues.
So we're not, not changing policy, other than-
Trying to figure out what-
What it is.
What it is, yeah, what it should be or is.
Do I have anybody that's want us to volunteer to do that?
Well, I was gonna actually recommend that Mr. Crozier be, be part of that, because he is the liaison to the planning commission. And while these are not necessarily planning commission areas, but-
They're, they involve ones that both Mr. White and myself have dealt with. And it, it is, it's a lot of ambiguity.
I suppose one way to do it is, I, I did the liaison to the planning commission before you did, so maybe it's you and I that take this on. I'm not looking for a whole lot more work.
I was thinking I'd been on the planning commission before, but since you-
Well-
Well, I can step off of both.
Yeah, so can I. So can I. I just, I, I hate to recommend something that I'm not willing to do, you see.
Sounds like it's gonna be a real gem of a committee.
Yeah, we might get another one if we find it.
That's right.
Get, get a school board member involved. So I, I guess my board, board comment, but I would still make the, the recommendation that we form said committee and see what happens.
I have one item, board comment. We went to, last week was the appreciation, volunteer appreciation over at Dogwood. And Jim and I seem to remember that there was a, that sometime in the past, we had a, a volunteer appreciation week resolution. And thinking instead of doing that, is that all of us know of individual organizations that do a lot to help the people of the county. And was wondering if we might just, on a routine basis, have resolutions for the individual volunteer groups, maybe one a month or so. And I'm sure that we all can come up with potential candidates for that. But either then make the presentation here, or the, one of the supervisors go to whatever organization's meeting and read the resolution at their meeting. I think sort of the, the thing we did with the Gordonsville Fire Department, I mean, that was a specific hundred-year thing, but we've got volunteer groups that are working all over the county. And it might be useful just to recognize them, and each one has the contributions that they're making in the community. List them. How's people feel about that?
Yeah, man, it's, it is an incredible number. I've often said that, you know, this community is as rich as it is because of the volunteer-
That's right.
-activities, everything from coaching Little League and soccer to the nursing home. I mean, we, this was a room full of people that volunteer, you know, continuously.
And, 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 you know, whether you talk about the Ruhr Tans, you know, a lot of times we do them when they have a specific, specific anniversary or something like it. But I don't think we need to wait till some, we don't need to wait till they've been around for a hundred years before we recognize them. Okay. All right. Next item.
I actually have a few things to say.
Okay.
One, we, four of us attended the chamber banquet last week. And it was, well, actually, five of us, including Brian. It is very nice to have such a vibrant business community, that the people are supportive, active, involved, just really good to have such a energized group of individuals and business in the county. And it's, it's greatly appreciated. Plus, it was a wonderful banquet. As far as staff goes, since the rest of them ran away, I won't say anything about them. But Glenda and Stephanie, both, I truly appreciate the work that you all perform on a regular basis, but also how you've been interacting with the school board. We work very hard, along with county administrator, to have the good relationships. But having staff members that go that extra mile to do what you all do is greatly, greatly appreciated. It's, it's an honor having you all working for, for the county. And then on one negative note, actually, it's positive, the jail workforce was out on Zora Road this past week. They managed to go from Route Twenty for a total of about a mile up to Old Office Road. They typically do three miles in a day.
Yeah, they collected the-
Fifty-six bags of trash in a mile or less. So what we've been talking about, the litter in this county, Jason has quite a job in front of him to, to get something accomplished. But that's wonderful that the workforce was able to do that. It's a darn shame that there was that much trash in that shortest section of the road.
Okay.
And that's it.
All right. It's seven o'clock. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. First public hearing is amendment to the taxation ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, this is a, this is a housekeeping matter. The, I discovered, the treasurer and I discovered that we were, our ordinance for assessing a penalty for not paying your food and beverage tax on time wasn't in compliance with the most current state code. So this is just modifying the language so that our penalty and interest provisions match what the state code calls for and allows.
Does anybody have questions for Tom? Okay. We will open the public hearing. Do we have anybody signed up?
No, sir.
And we'll close the public. Okay. I would entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Next, next public hearing is on the ordinance to create an Orange County broadcast, broadband authority. Well, we've, we've talked about, I know the county attorney has this in a position for you all to tonight, is to receive public comment on this. I'm certainly prepared to answer any questions, at least from the purpose of what this authority is and what it's trying to accomplish. And then the county attorney certainly can talk to, to legal matters regarding.
And if this passes this evening, then the next step would be filing these articles with the State Corporation Commission and getting them to initiate a charter. And if this passes this evening, then the next step would be filing these articles with the State Corporation Commission and getting them to initiate a charter.
Okay.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
What, what is the purpose of this?
Sure.
What is it going to accomplish?
Yeah, in, 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 in ten words or less.
You want him to play to the cameras?
Yes, yes. I could see he was chomping at the bit over there.
Well, following upon prior briefings and discussions and, and all with the board, what this does is it creates, under Virginia law, the ability for this board, as, sitting as the broadband authority, all the, all the authority, the, the, I guess, the technical abilities, the legal, the statutory framework, to really, I think, take a, a, a positive step forward with addressing broadband in underserved or unserved parts of the county. Virginia law is, is pretty clear on what this board's authority is, it's pretty sweeping authority. It also gives authority to other types of subdivisions, such as an economic development authority, also a water and wastewater service authority, and, and the list goes on. What this authority does is it focuses this board's efforts as stewards of the taxpayers' dollars to solve what is a, a very difficult problem. I, I've been, been working in this space for quite some time. In fact, I was fortunate enough in King George to help work and create the second broadband authority under, in the state in 2008, or six, eight, six, underneath this legislation. And it, it, it does not diminish, and I want to be real clear, does not diminish the transparency, the public meeting, all the other requirements this board has, the Planning Commission, E D A, are going to be held by the broadband authority. And I think as a, as a matter of, of, of practical, we'll probably convene the broadband authority. Now, I'm moving you all's meeting up to earlier in the day, but before the, the work session of the Regular Board of Supervisors. The agendas will be all on the website, the, the process will be very transparent, very public. But at the end of the day, just tying it together, this gives the best opportunity for this board to undertake this important work that will help with education, public safety, and foremost, economic development.
Okay. Any further questions for Brian?
Are there other jurisdictions close by that are doing anything with the broadband authority?
Yes, sir, Louisa County has had one stood up for a while. I've actually talked to my counterpart in Culpeper, and they're, they're interested, but there are a number of them quite across around the state.
But we want our broadband authority to actually do something.
And we will, yes, sir.
Any further questions for Brian? All right, let's open the public hearing. Anybody signed up to speak on the public hearing?
Yes, sir, we have one speaker signed up, Virginia Rockwell, 4247 Ridge Road.
Hi, ma'am.
Do you think I'm too far in, if you want?
Thank you. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I live across the fence from Mark, and he probably hears me screaming sometimes when the internet doesn't work. And we do have a child in high school. This has been an issue for a very long time. We do not have any access to, to unlimited broadband, we're very limited, and we're in a monopoly situation. That's true, I imagine, in a lot of the county. We are, there's fiber optic at the pedestal, at Ridge Road and Route 33. And every Verizon technician has told me that everything would freeze over before Verizon ever brought that up, Ridge Road. Comcast also claims to service the area, but they don't. And so we are in a monopoly situation. It's impossible for the kids to get their homework done in this situation. And magically, we lose all of our internet gigabytes, like clockwork, exactly seven days into our month, every month, no matter who's at home and who's using it. So there are a lot of issues with being, being left at the mercy of monopolies, and that's where we're at right now. My understanding is that you're proposing to fund the middle mile, and that we'll still need private enterprise to bring the high-speed down some of these farm roads. So the definition of what that is, and the scope of that, would be interesting to know. So when you get that mapped, be very curious to see that. Finally, with regard to a broadband authority, if you stand this up, you have to do something. So, and it has to work.
You'll keep on it.
You know, because it's quite obvious, you know, where it comes into the county, how it comes down, past Grimes, goes over Jones Mill Road, and then suddenly goes nowhere near where anybody can get access to it. So there's, you know, there's fiber optic and various forms of, you know, high-speed internet out there, but we're not tapped in. And, you know, Scoffleton Road, there's something going up and down 29, from the inject to Culpeper to DC, and there's something coming down 20, past Woodbury Forest, and across Spicer's Mill Road and up Jones Mill Road. I'm not sure what the status is at Montpelier. But somehow tying all that together in our end of the county, and then other parts of the county, makes a lot of sense to do. So I would be, support this broadband authority, and if there's anything I can do to support it, or, you know, if you get to doing some market research, I think it's going to be popular, but we're going to need to know who's going to deliver the final mile. And that there will be private enterprises to do that. I believe that there is gigabit internet money in the USDA farm bill put there by Senator Mark Warner. And so there's money there, and I don't know if that can be accessed as well. So I would like to bring your attention to that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rockwell. Any further speakers?
No, sir.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. All right. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just one thing that, that Virginia mentioned was about the middle mile. We, we really are, we're really aiming to, to do the last mile. The, there will be, we're not, actually, I'm, I'm speaking of what we think. There will be private enterprise on the, on the, the interface with the individual customer, but the infrastructure, they're not going to be providing the infrastructure, except maybe a box in your home. So the county is going to be building the infrastructure to get it over the entire county. So it will only be, but, you know, we, we don't, we're probably not going to want to get in the business of actually hooking people up and that sort of thing. So private enterprise will hopefully, well, I'm, I'm sure they will do that. In other areas where this is being used, there's, there's multiple I S Ps. So that's my hope here. I don't want to have one provider, there will hopefully be a dozen.
That you can have your choice.
Yeah.
And I think it's, as Ms. Rockwell pointed out, this really is a countywide problem, even areas that, that currently have some type of high-speed connection. They're dealing with franchise situations and reliability issues, and pricing issues, and everything else, and we've heard about all of those. And so this is a, this is an aggressive step, it is not without risk and trepidation and everything, and cost, frankly, to, to do this. But the timing does seem to be right. I hear from constituents like you that are facing similar situations, and if, if it isn't the number one priority in terms of the county needing to step in and, you know, put the, the dozens and dozens and dozens of pieces together in, in a way that makes some sense, this is one of the top priorities to do that. So I applaud the board for taking the, the, the step, if, if we're to do so, and, but I, I would point out it, there's no quick resolution, we're not going to flip a switch tomorrow morning and make everything happen, and it, it won't be free either. And there'll be some failures and hopefully some successes. So with, with that in mind, I mean, I think it's, I think we are ready to accept the challenge.
Yeah, well, I think we're trying to get away from the monopoly situation.
And, and that's one of the objectives, frankly, is that the only monopoly will be the broadband authority. Be us. There's only one.
And we're, we're, uh, subject to the voters, so. All right. Any further discussion?
Hopefully it'll be good cable before.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, next item on the agenda is the informational items. Anybody have any, uh, questions about those? Okay. Next is the appointments to the boards. Anybody want to make any appointments?
I should have two, we're next, Peter.
Okay. All right. The only thing I got on the agenda is this last item.
We got the calendar.
Calendar.
What's that?
Calendar.
Calendar.
Calendar, yeah. Any questions on the calendar?
With that saying, I move that we adjourn this meeting, because there is no further business.
Okay.
I would second that, but.